I know.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. The whole month off. I mean, seriously, I was like, because I forgot what day of the week it was already.
I usually camp per week out of state.
Hey, when we get ready.
But I need to sneak in here because I'm going to get the officer video. I didn't know this was happening. I didn't read it.
I got seven o'clock for you. Everybody good?
You're unmuted.
Everything's green. All right. Excellent. There you go. Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of Hopkinton Town Council July 3rd to order. I'd like to start off with a moment of silence and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Scott. Roll call. Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Present.
Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Counselor Burns.
Here.
I am here myself. Thank you. Good evening. All right. Public comment. All right, we're going to start out with the oath of office swearing in. Patrolman Ryan Ahearn. Oath of office, patrolman Samuel Kershaw. Yes, we want to go down here first. Kershaw.
Kershaw. Mr. President, you want to get a picture now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do it all swear.
Yeah, you want to get behind me, then I'll get down there.
Just wanted to make a few comments if I could beforehand. Do you want to have a seat or do you want to? Okay. Yeah, you know. I think it's important that we get a chance to introduce both the officers there so you get to know a little bit about them and maybe the trials and tribulations that they've had to go through over the last basically eight months or so. And before I do that, though, I want to thank the town manager, Brian Rosso, and I want to thank the town council. I came to the town council approximately eight months ago and we had a dilemma. I had two really good officers there and I don't want to give either one of them up. And if we lost them, we would have lost them for good. So I came to the town manager, which came to the town council. And my dilemma is this, is when I first came down here in 2012, I had 116 applicants over the course of the last roughly 10 years, 11 years. That nationwide, statewide has dwindled. Law enforcement recruitment is at an all-time low. And I dropped for the last three, down under 10 each time we had a recruit. So to get two really good recruits in one small pool was something. So I came to you, suggest we put two in the academy. I think it was a wise and prudent decision, and so I thank both the town manager and the town council. With that being said, I wanted to kind of give an idea of where these officers went through to get where they are now. We lost two officers in the middle of summer. So the captain and I had to really move very quickly to get them into the January academy. Sounds like a lot of time, but there's a lot of things that go into the mix on that. Once they applied there, we had a written test, an agility test, which obviously they passed. Then we went through an interview process, which they clearly were the two best candidates. Since that time, they had to do a pretty intense background. We want to make sure that they have a good moral compass, that we know that they're going to make it through the academy. They went through another agility test with the municipal academy. Two orientations. They had to go a psych test, which is a full day of questioning. And then they started on January 10th of this year. Probably the most difficult day of their life. While the academy doesn't get any easier, they learn to adapt. If they don't learn to adapt, they don't make it through. That's pretty much the way the municipal academy is run. They started with 66 applicants and they graduated May 26th with 56 officers. So tells you that there's a washout there. Lot of different things that they had to go through, some serious testing, a lot of physical agility that they go through. And obviously, if you look at them, they're in pretty good shape. So that's what they had to get to where they are now. Now that they are on the police department, there's a three-month field training position that they're going to go through, which means that they're going to be, they won't be on their own until approximately the end of August. So that's what they've gone through. Let me tell you, when I talk about five months, you're eating, drinking, and sleeping the academy because that's your only goal, because everything revolves around that. Very difficult time, and it should be a very difficult time. So kind of introduce both officers, starting with Ryan Ahearn. I think we have a few Ahearns here. Is there anybody not an Ahearn here? Once this is done, this is going to thin out very quickly. Ryan, he is 22. He graduated from Cherahoe. He born and bred here in Hopkinton, which we always like to see. I like to see that they're from the southern area. Nice when they're from Hopkinton. While he was in the high school, he wrestled all four years. During the off times, he was a laborer, construction, did restaurant. Worked at a restaurant during the summers. After he graduated, we had an opening in the police department for a dispatcher. So for the year before he went to the academy, he was a dispatcher. So he got a good chance to test his skills there. And quite honestly, being a dispatcher, there's some high-stress times. So we had a good chance to check out how he performed. He comes from a law enforcement background. His father is Detective Glenn Ahearn on here. He's almost 20 years on the department here, does a great job. And his grandfather, Ralph, was on the job over 25 years here in Hopkinton. So we feel he's a pretty good fit. Moving on to Sam Kershaw. Sam graduated from Narragansett High School in 2014. He's 27. While he was there, he wrestled basketball, baseball, and football. So very busy. During his summers, he was working at the Park and Recreation. After he graduated, he went on to the Wyatt Detention Center as a guard, not inside. He stayed a year there and then he moved over to the sheriff's department. He was there for approximately three years before he applied here. He also has a law enforcement family. Michelle Kershaw is his mother. His father is Arthur Kershaw, both retired lieutenants from the state police. And I worked with both of them, and they were good officers and good people. So I think there's good heritage there. So to kind of wrap it up is when we look for what is good for the Hopkinton police and for the officers that we're trying to take care of, first, obviously, we have to make sure that they're physically capable of making it through the academy, mentally making it through, and academically making it through the academy. And you want to make sure that they have some compassion and empathy for the people that they're working for. Probably one of the last things that you look for now, but it's become very important, as you well know, as we lose officers, is you're trying to fit a round peg in a round hole. And we're trying to assess that. I strongly agree that these two are the best fits that we could have gotten, and I wish them a long and healthy career here in Hopkinton. So with that being said, gentlemen, let us go to the center. Congratulations. Move over here.
Will you raise your right hand, please? You, Ryan Ahearn, and Samuel Kershaw solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States of America and of the state of Rhode Island, that you will, in all respects, observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the town of Hopkinton, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of a Hopkinton police officer. Congratulations.
Ryan, just come up and take a quick couple pictures while you're away here. Welcome.
Outstanding.
All right, moving forward. We move up a little bit there.
He wasn't lying. Oh, that it was going to fire right out of here, yeah. I graduated high school with Glenn.
All right, move forward. Other comment? Mr. Monroe.
Joe Moreau. It's going to be tough to follow that, I'll tell you. Good evening. Fortunately, we have had very few people who attend our council meetings, except for tonight, of course. You know, at the last voting period, we had 299 residents that showed up. And on our website, it lists 8,000 residents, and somewhere else, it lists 8,400. So people just don't show up to these meetings. Unfortunately, a lot of our residents believe what they read in letters to the editor, emails, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera. If you don't attend council meetings, or you don't look at the videos, sometimes you don't get the true facts. The facts are, we don't have resident support to staff, some of our boards and commissions. I mentioned before about the charter commission. It was recently activated. We've had about three meetings. There was an interim report that was dated May 22nd, 2016. And the minutes of the meeting was March 6, 07. And it was just November 6th of 2006 that the charter was revised. That's 17 years ago. And I want to thank Marita and Sidney for providing that information. I believe one of the most important commissions that we have to our residents in our town is the EDC, the Economic Development Commission. I don't know how long that's been inactive. I've tried looking for minutes. For the EDC?
2006, two zero six.
You know, our council president has mentioned many times, and I agree with Michael, you know, it's time to move forward. Some members of our council are trying to move our town council forward. And I appreciate that because, you know, I follow what's going on in another neighborhood in town. And you've got council members arguing over where they're going to sit at the council meeting. So we're very fortunate that we have people that can work together. There will be discussion later on under unfinished business. I had one council member ask me if I thought non-residents should be on a board or commission. That's not before us tonight. It's not all, from my understanding, it's not all boards and commissions. What we're talking about is the EDC only. And there's going to be restrictions on that also. In closing, earlier, I mentioned about the charter review being active again November 2006. We can't wait for our EDC. We need to move forward. If you look again in Richmond, and they're working on some things with their EDC, and they're looking at a lot of different things that they want to do in their town. I forwarded an email that I received, and it talked about a medical center. And, you know, they're really pushing their EDC. I think that's something we need to do. We need to work together as a council, as residents. I don't know how many are left. I don't know how we get residents involved, but the people that are involved in the council, we need to push it forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joseph. Anybody else have a public comment? Anybody online with a hair and wrists?
There is no one online.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, approval of agenda order. Consent agenda. Approved town council meeting minutes of June 14th, 2023. Approved town council meeting minutes of June 2023. Set date July 17th, 2023 as a hearing date for multiple event permit filed by revive with coffee.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion on the floor, second. Nays. All in favor?
First, aye.
Davis, aye.
Burns, aye. Moffett, aye.
Gary, aye. Excellent, thank you. Town manager's report. I know, do you want to go first, or you want to let Jeff go first?
Good evening, council members, audience. For the record, my name is Liz Monte, and I'm the finance director. But this evening, I'm here at the request of the town manager to help to give his report. He had a prior engagement tonight. This is a short report. It's only two items on it. We're going to talk a little bit about the new website update and a new grant opportunity. We can abbreviate that as MTAP, so I will have some help with that. First, the website is coming along very well. In fact, we're closing in on the launch. So it's going to look really great. And a big thank you to all department heads, the town manager and his assistant, and especially to Jeffrey Burnett, who has been giving us countless hours for this cause. It's looking great. And without further ado, I'd like to bring up Jeff, our IT director, who can tell you more about it.
I'm just going to give you guys a short. Okay. So I am going to be looking this way. I apologize for that because I can't look at the screens when I'm here. Okay, so our homepage, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the homepage, the government dropdown, a little bit about business, and a little bit about community. Okay? So first, on the government tab, the town council page. So we did a little bit of work here. We had your pictures taken. I do believe just before the last town council meeting, this is something that we looked at. We thought it was important to have images on the website to kind of make it pop, a draw, something new, something we did not have on our last site. So here we go. This is what it has the possibility to look like. We also had our crest redone and put together by a professional. We had it redrawn. We did darken up the images just to make it a little bit more professional. As you look through the page, we do have an events calendar for the town council. This will list anything concerning the council. This actually has the next town council meeting on it. The calendar is available on every committee, every department page, if there's anything specific to that group. Agendas and minutes are available directly on each board, each commission page, so you can get to the agendas and the minutes right on that page. You can also look at every agenda in every minute related. This also includes the police commission, because the police commission, for example, chief, does actually have their minutes and agendas posted, just like every other one. We did take your individual images, and we did post them on this page.
Hey, can you hold back up to me, Jeff?
Sure.
William Geary.
Oh. Oh, there you go. So you never know. And the two o'clock in the morning test. If you do click on the names, I got it right here, though. This will actually launch to an email, and I can type my name, my email address, and it actually drops right out to a message and sends. Just something nice on the about page, this is something that we should also show. There's a photo gallery, and we did work with the local areas, like from the Ashway Free Library. We did get some historic photos from them, and we did put them on the page as well. We are working with each public library, for example, and we're getting images from them. Like the 1904 building, we're trying to collect those images at the request of many residents in town. So on the government page as well, we also have each individual department. For example, I'll just jump into the planning department real quick to give you one example. Images, we selected this image just to have an example on a page. Every department gave us a mission. Every department gave me some basic functions that they perform. Contact information, telephone numbers, fax numbers. Everybody has a Google Map link. And then anything specific to those departments, if the planning department, for example, has specific forms, here they are and available. Community tab, these are things that are directly related to what's out there for our community. We do have things that are still under construction, things like open space, hiking trails. We are still collecting information from other areas. So for instance, you're not going to find everything from Hopkinton outdoors. They are actually still working on providing information to us. So this is going to continue to expand. If you click on one of these links, for example, it actually opens up the link, a document they sent us. This is one that they still need to send us. That's why I clicked on it. Business, a link directly out to Rhode Island Commerce. That way, people can actually get to what they're looking for with one click. And as you can see, sometimes there's even problems with the tech guy sitting here. There are a tremendous amount of, there's a tremendous There are a tremendous amount of, there's a tremendous amount of information on this page. Records request, for instance, chief. Right there, available to our constituents without going seven pages deep to find it. We put it right in front of everyone. Search was very important to many of the people that provided information to us. Is the applica, access to public records right there at your fingertips.
Jeff, I mean, when you go to search, say, not really sure what you're asking. Say, type in ordinances on yard cleanliness or trash in yards that come up or have to go.
That, that search would actually be in the ordinance.
Okay.
In the Munich code. But if you wanted to get the ordinances, you would put in ordinance, and it would take you directly to Munich code.
There you go. And then you could search whatever you want.
You would do the search from there.
Excellent, excellent. Very good, Jeff.
If you had any other specific questions, we just wanted to give you a quick overview of the, the site. Images, very important to keep it fresh, keep it up to date. There's a nice picture of Randall Field. These very, these other hot buttons here, it was very important, especially to Brian. The vote button, this is something he wanted me to, to bring up. And, and Joe, this is important to you as well, based on your comments that you just made. The vote button here brings you to a significant amount of information that Merida provided to me. Everything is at your fingertips. Where are your polling places? And the last sample ballot would be right here, right at your fingertips. The election dates, we're going to be filling those in. Right now, there's no local estate elections. If, when there are, we fill them right into this page. You can track your mail ballot. Takes you right to the Secretary of State website where you can do it. This was extremely important to Brian, to put it right out in front of everyone. And I can't thank Brian enough and the people in the town, department heads, other people who, who called me. It really drove this site. This was not just me. This was more the, the people in the, the town that really pushed to make this, this site better. So.
How do you get back to the?
The homepage? Just click on home.
Okay, thank you.
And that's why that bar stays. No matter where you are in the site, home is always there. When, when you put home at the bottom of every page, it, it becomes, you know, people start scrolling to the bottom to find it. You scroll back to the top, home is always there. And these, uh, these buttons are, um, minutes and agendas were also important. If you look here on the homepage, minutes and agendas, if you click on this, go to town council, for example. Is the agenda broken out by year? Is the July third meeting? You're only going to find, of course, the agenda. Click on the agenda. And there it is.
Excellent.
So we're hoping for much more intuitive. This will be much more intuitive for our residents, much faster, easier to learn. And we did have the.
What about the form? Where they can get a reduction for being older on their taxes?
So that's on the tax assessor page, just like it is today. You go to government, tax assessor. We actually create, Tiana created a tax exemptions tab. And Tiana did an amazing job. Tiana thought of everything when it came to exemptions. These are her exemptions. This was brand new, actually, Wednesday. If you click on one of these, it jumps right to the section. And if there's a form associated with a section, there's a link inside that section. If you click on it, it takes you to the form. So no more jumping around, looking for the information. Tiana, she, she did an amazing job.
Excellent.
Now, do you have to, you would print that out, right?
Yeah, this is a, this is a printer, this is a form you'd have to save to your desktop if you were at home and print it. None of the, some of the forms are fillable, some of them are not.
How many are fillable and how many are not?
I, I could not tell you. That is, that's something I did not track, the number of fillable forms to the number of not. It should be an effort over the next year, year and a half to get our forms to fillable. But that is something that we'd have to, you know, take and make an effort to do.
I know election forms are fillable, but you still have to use your own signature. So notice that on like the Board of Elections, if you got to rest, you can fill it out, but you still have to sign it.
Print and sign? Yeah, that, that's based on the rules of whatever.
If we're going to have a, you know, a link to. I think we've made some great improvements. This is the greatest improvement in a long, long time for the town. As long as it's easy for people to maneuver it. The only thing that concerns me is some, particularly some of the older residents who go through the internet. But you really can't. They're going to just have to seek out people to help them with that. They don't do the online stuff. Excellent. Jeff, looks fantastic. When will this be up and available?
We are working with the vendor right now. We are going to launch. We still do have some, a few things we need to fix. Obviously, you saw one, your name. I'm going to probably go in the back room, change that right now. We, we do have a, a few things that we still need to fix. We got, we have some spelling issues, some name issues that need to be fixed. But we are working with them to launch as soon as possible.
The how do I, it led just, what's the, see the how do I?
Oh, yes. So if you click on how, how do I, we do have some.
Okay, all right.
Some of the hot topics, for instance.
Yep.
So directory listing.
Yeah.
Is it, is the names, telephone numbers, addresses?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, and on another financial note, we have just about finalized payments to the vendor, but we're holding out a retainance just so we can get everything up and running properly in the way that everyone wants it. So a big thank you to everyone in the effort of this. This has been a huge accomplishment for us.
Excellent. Anything else for Jeff or Miss Monte?
We have a second item on the town manager's report, and it's the municipal technical assistance grant opportunity. This is something new for the town. It's coming to all of Rhode Island, a new application that encourages affordable housing. And for this topic out there, I'm going to call upon our town planner, Talia Gillette. Talia, are you out there?
Hi, Liz. Yes, this is Talia. Sorry, my, my camera on my computer doesn't work, so you'll just have to put up with hearing my voice and not seeing my face, but I, I'm happy to, I'm happy to be here to, to discuss the municipal technical assistance program.
So. But you take it away.
There are a couple of things that I want to note quickly before I get into the meat of what the program is. So recently, there has been an update to the program. Because of the recent changes to legislation at the state level, there are many communities that have submitted applications to this program to amend their regulations to now comport with state law. So one thing that the program is doing is they're holding off on accepting applications in relation to that specific kind of activity. So while we would not be able to apply for those kinds of opportunities at this point in time, we would be able to potentially in the future. I can get to that a little bit later. So largely, there are, there are other different activities that we can focus on. But one thing that will happen is that ultimately, Rhode Island Housing will be hiring their own consultant, who will be providing every municipality, regardless of whether or not you actually participate in this program, with templates and like basic forms for amendments to regulations. And then later on, municipalities can then seek out funding to refine those regulations to better fit what suits a community best. But right now, they're kind of pumping the brakes on that kind of, that portion of the program. A couple of things about the program generally, so it's open to every municipality in the state of Rhode Island. We need to have support from a key municipal leader, so that's like the town manager, a member of the town council. The scope of work has to be carried out by a consultant that's been approved by Rhode Island Housing, and there's been a list of eleven, and they're included in the materials that I provided to you for your packets. One great thing about this program is that we can take many bites of the apple in that we can apply for many different kinds of activities. And as long as we get them completed in eighteen months, because the proposed timeline for completing this global work may not exceed eighteen months, we can get up to a hundred thousand dollars from this program to assist us in, in any of the enumerated activities that are listed under eligible activities. So what are some of the things that we can do now? Right now, we could engage in a needs analysis. So this is like identifying where in town affordable housing could fit or would, could be built. This can be undertaken in a number of different ways, but that's one opportunity that can be funded. Another is looking at infrastructure capacity. So that's like where or if we could expand sewer or water service. And then the third is about engaging the public and community in supporting affordable developments or changes to zoning. So those are the three big categories that are available right now. The Rhode Island Housing has communicated to us that the the consultant that they will be hiring will be selected no later than July twenty-first of this year. So it's not as though it's going to take a particularly long time for them to pick that party and then have that party produce deliverables that will then be shared with all of the different cities and towns in Rhode Island. But all of these land use changes optimally should be done. And by, by land use changes, I mean like changes to our local regulations should take place, or we should, we should aim to have them completed before January first, twenty twenty-four, because that's when a majority of these new housing bills will take effect. Not all of them, some of them have already actually, they were implemented upon passage. But most of them are going to come into effect in January of twenty twenty-four. So if you have any questions about the program, I'd be happy to talk to you about them. If you have, if you want to think about it a little bit, the applications can be submitted on a rolling basis. We can also partner with another community. So say if there is something that Richmond or Charlestown or another abiding community like Exeter wants to do, and we think that it's a good idea, we think it would be beneficial for the region or the communities together. We could partner with them, and it would not impact our ability to still draw down that a hundred thousand dollars for the town itself. So that's another interesting element of the whole program. But again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have now, or if you have questions in the future, you can pose them to Brian, and he can ask them of me, and I can give them the information or the information that any of you are interested in having about it. So.
Talia?
Yes.
This is Sharon Davis. One more time, the three eligible activity areas that you thought we could take advantage of. Would you repeat those three areas again?
Sure. So the first one is doing a needs analysis. So that's basically, we would be assessing where in the community we would want to establish affordable housing or where it could be placed. So it's, it's related to general planning principles, which suggests that you should put development in certain areas. And so it's, you'd want to have some considerations of, okay, where can, where can we reasonably accommodate new development? It's, it's an exploration of that kind of activity. So that's the first one. The second one is the infrastructure capacity assessment. So that's like looking at the capacity that the town has now and in the future to have water or sewer service. So that's pretty self-explanatory. And then the third one is about engaging the community in supporting proposed affordable developments or changes in land use policy. So that's about kind of like voter and community outreach in relation to various housing-based beliefs and concepts. So those are the three that are, that we can apply for right now. In the future, we'll be able to apply to potentially refine some of the material that's given to us by the consultant hired by the state for our own purposes. But the three activities enumerated are pretty much what we could apply for right now.
Excellent. Talia, this is Steve Moffett. I just want to make a comment. Thank you for explaining this program to us, giving us a better understanding of, of what we have available. I agree with you on your, you know, your one, two, threes, as far as, you know, what we can do now. And I think this would be probably some, a lot of this information could go a long way in the town of Hopkinton and help.
Yes.
I think it's a good opportunity. I think it's one that the town council needs to, to be on top of and make sure that it is that's implemented, and we are moving in the right direction. So thanks again.
Of course.
I have one more thing on the infrastructure capacity assessment.
Sure.
Do you think we really have much capacity?
So the purpose of this program is not necessarily to say this is exactly where the capacity is. It can be an exploration, and ultimately, it's not. The results of the study are not necessarily going to be telegraphed before you receive them. So we very well could undertake a study and find that an area that, for example, we might want to put affordable housing in, it might not be the best location, because maybe there isn't a great deal of access to water, or maybe there isn't other amenities that would be beneficial to that form of development. So it's not, it's not necessarily. It's not necessarily a question of determining entirely whether or not we have the capacity everywhere. I mean, we could potentially endeavor to do something that intensive, but it's, it's, you could consider, okay, so say you want to participate in something that's called a transfer of development rights. So you, that's basically where you take a development interest that's owned by one party, and you send it from one area to another area. And so maybe where you want to send something, it has soils that are not as good for infiltration of swarm water, if you're, if you're creating a lot of impervious surface, but maybe the, the site that you want to develop on does. So it's, it's about looking at the, these different kinds of amenities that exist within a community. So it's not necessarily a question of, of my saying, yes, I think we have more, we have capacity to expand, or no, I don't think that we have capacity to expand. So that was kind of a long-winded answer to a, a question that, that probably could have been yes or no. But I'm, it, it can go in, in many different directions. And that's one thing that's so exciting about this program, is that we can use it to really study a lot of different things that we might not be able to have the funding to do otherwise. Study a lot of different things that we might not be able to have the funding to do otherwise.
So the point I meant, I, the reason I raised that about the infrastructure is that I. We uh Hopkinton has been criticized for not. Doing development and one of the and and one of the. Reasons given for not being able to do development is that we don't have water and we don't have sewer, so to try to. Get a big supermarket or something, that's going to be difficult, or so you know, so. I just, I I agree to do the assessment, but I just don't know. If it's gonna be very, if it's gonna come up with positive. Results for us, but anyway, at least.
It might not, it might not, so I mean, we can undertake this study and, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, so 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 my comment is kind of, you know, to the infrastructure capacity assessment. That that uh infrastructure capacity assessment could go a long ways for mixed-use development type of areas too where. You can have affordable housing and you can have supermarkets and you can have different varying things, so. I think um the biggest and open, honest thing to any type of growth in the town of Hopkinton would be a review of our capabilities. Of what we can absorb, what's our ceiling, what's our bottom, right? And I think an infrastructure capacity assessment would probably give us a better idea of what we're grabbing for. You know, as as far as like what what's the potential? You know, I mean, we're gonna try for, you know, not knowing what we can handle, we don't know what our potential is. Yeah, right, so so this is good news that we have an opportunity to, you know, potentially do that. Um I think the infrastructure capacity, because sewer and water plays a a role in, you know. And it's affordable housing and and mixed-use development in in all kinds of other stuff.
Just because we don't, just because we don't have sewer lines that are running.
Right.
Three, and that doesn't mean it's not feasible.
Right.
Because Walmart and Westerly is on sewer, but they're on town water.
Yeah, no, there's.
It is feasible, now we are sitting, it's feasible.
Right, right, and if we can do the homework before some big company has to come do the homework for us because we don't have these type of assessments in in. You know, available, you know, so it's like, hey, show us, what's the opportunity, oh, we gotta go dig for this opportunity too, maybe we're doing a little too much like work. I'm coming here potentially, so I I think something like this is a a good thing for us. Right, so you know, whether we have a future discussion regarding, you know, I mean, again, it sounds like we can take multiple bites of the apples, so. You know, you know, whatever, we do have plans as far as all this, we can just fire it right off and. And I'm sure Talia is, you know, happy to hopefully, you know, have some money to kind of give her some tools and information. To potentially kind of wrap her head around some of the things that come before us, so.
Yeah.
Capacity, this is volume.
So this is a great thing.
Good, it's good.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Of course, it's not often where you get to have your cake and eat it too, so it's it's an exciting opportunity to be able to do that.
Mister President?
Yes.
I I just wanted to add that uh when I when I got the news that there was. An agency that was working on putting together some sort of like a model zoning ordinance that would comply with all the new. Uh state statutes, I thought that was great news, I I hope that that is something that that comes to fruition and that we'll be able to use that because. If we have like a basic template that complies with the state laws that we can then um. You know, update and and adjust to, you know, to the needs of of a Hopkinton, I think that, because I was really worried when I I knew all the state legislation was coming that. That that was going to be a real challenge and this would be a huge help if if this actually uh. Pans out and and we got a model ordinance and some model um uh land development regulations.
I'm very hopeful that that will actually be the case, so same, I was also a little bit worried, Steve.
That would make my job and and Talia's job and the folks on the planning board and. I would just, it would be a huge help to to everyone if we had something to start with that we could then just adapt for the town's uh needs.
Thank you, Steve, thank you, Liz, thanks, Talia.
Very good, thank you, Talia.
You're welcome, of course.
Move forward, wait until Steve gets back. Vacancies in appointments, one, discuss, consider possibility to vote. To reappoint Clifford Hill Jr. as an alternative to the zoning board of review.
I make a motion to um. Reappoint Clifford Hile as an alternate to the zoning board of review.
A second on motion?
Motion on floor, days. All in favor?
Davis, aye.
Moffett, aye.
Burns, aye.
Bruce, aye.
Here I, motion passes, welcome back, Cliff.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. All right, new business, let's get here, yeah, let's get here. Discussing considered to possibly write in a hearing date for the proposal ordinance amendment to the article one. In general, chapter four, animal, the ordinance amendment is being introduced and sponsored by Counselor Hurst, Counselor Hurst.
Yeah, it's uh, I think I talked to Marita, uh you want to have this at the next meeting? The hearing or the first one in August?
July, I'm sorry, July seventeenth.
It that's not a heavy agenda, is it? Yeah, why don't we do it on July seventeen, so we can move on this.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, I actually have a couple of things I read through this, um. I don't know when the discussion comes up, if we're actually supposed to do that, the date of voting. Or what, um but I have a few. Instances like on page three of your ordinance. Very last line, C. Says this section shall not apply to licensed hunters during hunting season or a licensed business killing animals. Or human consumption.
Right.
You have a lot of non-licensed. Self-proclaimed butchers, farmers in a local area that I think should be added into that also.
I would believe that that would go under licensed hunters if they're hunting and butchering their animals.
But they're not licensed hunting is only for a certain period of time during the year, I'm talking about somebody like myself. Butches his own cows and his own pigs for his own consumption. Outside of the hunting season.
I'm glad that you brought it up, I've never heard of it before, to put it on there, I will figure out if I can or not.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm bringing it up, because there's plenty of farms here in the local area that kill their own animals. And hang them and put them in their.
Right, right, I believe that they they should, the farms and whatnot should be licensed to be doing so on their property.
Not necessarily, the self-proclaimed, how many, how many people you know? Mr. Gary, yourself, you've done chickens, your own livestock. Your own personal livestock, yeah, not for other people licensed.
Right, for yourself.
I'm talking about for your personal, you know, during the hunting season, yes, for DEM, I do a lot of processing the deer as. Your police department knows. But in the off-season, like I just did two pigs. You know, if my family, they're only myself, I'm not doing them for the public. But in your ordinance, it blocks us.
Right.
And this is the red, right, this is all this.
The red line is just being imposed, correct?
Mister President?
Steve, go ahead.
Well, I I I just, I I don't want to interrupt Counselor Burns, but uh the only thing that's on the agenda today. Is to consider setting a hearing date, really, so like the actual, like. If there are going to be amendments proposed or or work that's going to be done on the ordinance, I think that would be for the. The next hearing, and I know there is some work that needs to be done on it, and and I think that what the council should do is. Is um this is something that that I worked on with um the the ACO. It's probably going back like a year and a half now. And so it's something that, you know, I I'd like to revisit and and work with her and uh I I'd like to know. I guess how the the council's game plan for getting, you know, as far as um who's going to be assigned to work on this, because. Uh I started working on this before we had our current bylaws in place, which which say that the the council should approve. Uh me to work uh on an ordinance, and so I I I think what would be helpful to me tonight is. Is for the council to make some sort of a decision about who should be doing the the legwork. To uh you know, get this across the finish line, because there is some work that needs to be do, you know, the, I mean, even just, I went through it and. And the um the ordinance numbers need to be um updated. And uh there are, there are some things of that nature, but I I'd like to get a sense of whether the council wants me to work on that or. Or to work with the ACO or. Um if there's anyone, you know, the and it's really for the town manager, I would think, to decide as well, um. You know, how that, how that assignment would be uh distributed.
Steve, how about yourself, the the ACO and Counselor Hurst work on this, Brian?
I mean, that's that's uh fine, I mean, if the council would like to vote just to authorize me to to continue uh working on it, I'd I'd feel. Uh more comfortable going forward if I had that. Um and then I and then I can work with Ms. Bowen and and with with Brian when he's. Uh back and we can, we can get that moving and and have something that's, you know, I I, you know, this is something that I haven't looked at in in quite a long time and. Uh we should be able to have it ready for you.
My question to you is, if you want to not set a hearing date, you can work on some more and then set up hearing date in two weeks or another month.
I I I'd like to have a date so that I have a a deadline and something to work toward, but the other thing I'd I'd like you to consider is that uh. The next few weeks I'm going to be occupied mostly by focusing on these new land use laws. That's going to be, you know, the 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 number one thing that I'll be working on for the town, at least for the next few weeks, so if this is something, maybe you might want to push it back. Um just a little bit, so I have a little more breathing room to.
How about the second meeting in August, is that too late?
I think that that. That sounds reasonable to me.
I I just want to add this, I um. This is gonna be probably long and dragged out, I think, some of the conversations could, we don't know where it's gonna go. So I, you know, hate to sound this way, but in July, I do not want to be here for three hours. Don't want to be, I don't want to do it, and it sounds like Steve needs time, you know, we are gonna, you're like, you just started reading it, right, you're you know. You're you're looking for, you're gonna have all these questions and stuff like that, so i- i- in the meantime, you know, I mean, you could. Without us having a discussion, you could reach out to Steve or reach out to him and just kind of say, hey, these are some of the questions that I will have. Instead of waiting for our hearing and then like going, oh, let me get the information and things went on the road, so. As you see things, you know, make notes, keep track, you know, we're not gonna discuss it because we're not gonna, you know, we can't discuss anything outside of the council, but. Um I I like. Middle of September.
I'd I'd say we can go up to the end of September.
I mean, to me, then I kind of think it allows us to review it, Steve's, you know, catching up on it, you know, again, or whatever, kind of putting it all together.
Yeah, it's just, it's one of these things that's been out there for longest time, it's kind of, everybody's kind of dabbled a little bit.
Right, because it'd be nice to just glide into it, having understanding of what we.
You one question, though? Man?
Yeah, yes.
Is this holding this ordinance off till September, is this hindering anything you have going on right now?
Nope, now I can continue going the way that I'm going, I just.
Alright, I just want to make sure that we weren't. I I think the, no, I I seriously, well, I I think us looking at this and firing off. Some questions about it that you may need some time to think about, right, so we do have sixty days and as we go through it and, you know. I know Counselor Burns is gonna have an opinion on some of these things because he's, you know, he's involved with livestock, he's involved with the animals and in in. In in that community, so maybe some things will be flushed out or, you know, before we sit down and have a hearing and then. You know, I I just think it's smoother sailing, more ducks in a row, it's just a better situation, so that that's that's my argument for.
And I'm gonna ask, uh Marita, is the fact that Kevin Breen is a longtime friend of mine, he's town administrator. In West Greenwich, he's a dairy farmer, he's one of the last remaining dairy farmers in Rhode Island, and he's also a former councilman. And I'd like to get a copy of this and and ask him what he thinks, because I have.
Well, here's the problem with that right wave, because he's scratched, might be totally opposite of what we have.
But we're adding a lot of state law, we are updating a lot of things to what is currently state law, because I mean, we we have to follow state law at the end.
I could, one thing I could say that maybe would be helpful is is that a lot of the regulations and things that relate to to what goes on 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 farms. Uh is is that's, those are regulated by the state, the DEM, a lot of the animal control ordinance goes to um. More issues, I mean, and and please correct me if I'm wrong, uh but. But it's it's a lot more to do with um like stray animals and animal abuse and pets and things of that nature, I think that the. Farming activity and hunting activity is a lot more uh state-regulated.
You're right, I just found that one out myself, that DEM has its own agricultural law that you have to follow if you're going to have some kind of agricultural and that's what you would refer to. Not so much this part of it, this is to make sure that people aren't just willy-nilly killing animals and and butchering them in their backyard, because we don't want that.
Let's nail this down.
I just want one, look on page twenty one. And there's a, I think it's a word, needs to be changed.
The his and hers?
No, no, just this, this is what I have right now, I, because I don't. Okay, four point three point oh four oh, number two, it says all fees shall be created to the town, I think it's credited.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, no worries.
Alright, some of you would like to make a motion too, here's, someone needs to make a motion to have.
So what's the date today, July third, I mean.
We can go up to the end of September, that's fine.
When is Labor Day, is that a Monday, is that always a Monday?
We always need to choose the after Labor Day, which is always on a Monday.
Okay, alright.
Let me get back to our map. Somebody, somebody wants, you can get to the day, so I want to make a motion to have Counselor Hurst. Counselor, not Counselor, but the town attorney, Stephen Seiple, and the AOC, where to go. To do that, we need to get a motion done so we can get Steve back into it, then we can get a day.
Um I'll make a motion that we as a council approve um our town solicitor to work with Counselor Hurst, animal. The uh animal control officer and the town manager in order to uh move along our animal control.
Floor, second, all in favor?
Burns, aye.
Bruce, aye.
Davis, aye.
Here I, you got it, Steve, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So.
And then.
State, okay, right.
However, we have Tuesday, September fifth, or Monday, September eighteenth.
Why don't we go with the eighteenth?
Yeah.
I I. Mister President, before you set a hearing date, uh the only last comment I would like to make is, I I know this is very important to the animal control officer and uh. The police department, but we have a uh a deadline that is imposed by the state that is out of our control when it comes to these uh new land use laws and. I just, I have to make that my my priority.
And what is that date?
Uh I mean, well, it's up to the council now to select a date for a hearing on the animal control ordinance and and I'll do my best to make sure we're we're ready for that.
Well, I mean, I will make the comment that we, I mean, we are a lot closer to doing this than we we are, I mean, we're we're setting a hearing day. Down the road to, it it's it's gonna be faced, right, we're gonna deal with it and we're gonna get through it, not that we don't want to, but.
No, we gotta push it forward.
Right, absolutely, one hundred percent.
We should put September eighteenth, and if we have to move it up, we can always move it up at another meeting and change the date. But I think we should go with the eighteenth of September, and if it has to be moved up, we certainly can have a motion to do that.
Alright.
Do you want me to make a motion, I make a motion.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion that the uh hearing of uh this ordinance. Be held on September eighteenth. Uh twenty twenty three.
Motion on floor, second?
A second.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor?
Bruce, aye.
Burns, aye.
So that's.
Now, can I reach out?
Number one.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I mean, ma, through the town manager, maybe, I don't know how that works, you know what I mean, well, because of the, you know, I mean, that's all. Or you can talk with Steve, however.
Right, I mean, I'm I'm happy to to receive input from from whoever, I, what I basically did was I took the town's current ordinance.
I have input.
And I tried to bring it up to speed with the the state laws that are that are in place now.
Alright, we're good, excellent, thank you.
But the legal question, Steve's got it. That's why we got Steve here to answer those questions.
Excellent, ah unfinished business discussing considered to vote on a motion in either. Approve or reject the amendment to the the code code of ordinances, trap two, administration, division four. Economic Development Commission, section two eighty-eight dash A, to change the number of members from seven to five. And the requirement of, the requirement of them. And the requirement of, the requirement of them need to be either a resident or no, or no more than two people who have a, an existing business interest in the town. And six, to elect a chairperson, vice president and secretary introduced and sponsored by Council.
I would like to first get rid of the requirement um, to have non-residents. Not changing that part. So that middle part, I would take that out of it. So I would just change to, change the number of members from seven to five and then I'd go down to and to elect a chairperson, blah, blah, blah.
Mr. President, I'm. Hold on, anybody else have discussions?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, talk about, this is yours.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, I want to point out that before we go any further, I am definitely interested in hearing what these two have to say with previous conversation. Um, any member may be removed by town council at any point in time. And these are elect, these are positions that we vote on. And they have no voting privilege.
I understand.
As a non-resident. You know, just because they own the business doesn't mean that they have voting privileges on our situation.
I think we originally talked about this. That's why we nailed it down to three, three to two. Two to three.
Right, well.
Well, my thing is, is whether we choose to have non-residents, residents is, is with us, we need to move forward. Okay? And i- if it's, it's, if it's such an enduring thing that nobody wants to see this in the town, then I would encourage those people that have made the comments over the last couple of days to come on here and fill out an application. If you don't want to fill out an application, this bothers you, then we're gonna move forward.
Or please come to a meeting.
Yeah, so, so at the last meeting, I made a suggestion that, you know, that to add the two people, you know, who have existed, that it can not be more than two, you know? A- after thinking about it, you know, and talking with many people about it, and even my initial first thought was I didn't think that you needed to be a resident of the town to be involved with the Economic Development Commission. Like, you know, I mean, you, 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 you have people who are affiliated with them because they have a business interest, right? Um, and I, I, I don't think that um, I don't think we should allow non-residents on our, on this commission. Um, I personally don't think it's delaying any economic development. I think if somebody has a business interest, they're already willing to, to do something with it, uh, because they will obviously have an ear of somebody on the economic, economic development commission.
True.
Um, I wholeheartedly support the, you know, lowering it down to five members. I think that does help facilitate it. Um, you know, but when I, when I do look at five-year terms and all this other stuff, I think that's kind of nuanced. I don't really think that matters. If, if someone's on it and they want to resign, they give them sign. You're not signing your life away, right? So, so I, like Sharon just described, would, would um, would like to, to strike moving uh, not more than two people who have an existing business interest in town and keep it, you know, the residents. Um, I don't think this slows us down in any bit. If, if we haven't been active since two thousand and six, I don't think adding non-resident people to this is.
Oh, yeah, I'd be.
I like the idea of it being, you know, cheese to dangle to somebody maybe, but, but for what reason, right? If, if you have a business interest in town, I mean, you should already have been, you know, talking to building zoning or the planning office or somebody, right? Somebody somehow, if you're a serious person about seriously doing, you know what I mean? Um, because there's a lot of talk about this, a lot of talk about that. Um, a lot of people in town don't realize how nuanced this economic development is and how many hours like the, just the thought process and the ownership that people have to take upon themselves to, to actually, you know, see these things through, right? And sit on a board with people who have different ideas and all this other stuff and I personally think that we're far from it. I'm, you know, reluctant to believe that it's not possible, you know, that we could have a thriving economic development.
How many people do we have on right now? One, one, we need, so we need.
Right, we have any pending applications? I'm gonna.
Alright, so leaves us two more.
So I will um, make a, a motion that we strike.
Okay, hold on, I wanna, I want to get everybody else's thing and we'll come back to motion. Scott, go ahead. I was gonna offer a motion to strike it. What I have done specifically is I've contacted multiple towns. Was hoping to have it in a packet. I distributed, uh, somebody printed it out to me. And I've contacted uh, numerous towns. And it's highly unusual to have non-residents on boards and commissions. Uh, with the exception, I know uh, in West Warwick, I guess on the safety commission, they do allow the police chief and the fire chief to be on it, whether or not they're residents. Uh, I guess in Charleston, uh, at least you have to be, uh, other than the, like, the, an architect on a building code committee. And I think in West, unless it's uh, permitted by ordinance in districts and aside, the town of North Stuyen, you have to be elected. The voters actually elect who chairs on the economic development commission. And I've done quite a bit of work on this uh, this topic. And uh, I think what we really have to do as council members on this is to recruit people. You gotta be a recruiter if you're on the council. Because I know a lot of boards and commissions nobody want to serve on. And we need to contact the state and say, what are you gonna do for Topkinen? We decided this town not to have a veterans affairs committee because of manpower and we decided to uh, just have a veterans affairs agent. And what we really need to focus on is who our point person could be for economic development, whether it's a planner, whether it's a town manager. I'm not gonna use staff to do this. I refuse to. I mean, I mean, I mean. It's, well, it's special council decision. Has enough stuff to do without tag. That's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of. Put the town planner in economic development. She's a town planner. She's not a financial planner. Continue. The, the, can I finish? The, the fact of the matter is, anybody can make a phone call, contact the governor's office, the commerce department, say, can you meet with the council? Uh, and, and talk about what are the options? They know because they have inquiries from outside the state, people looking at Rhode Island. We have assets and we have liabilities. Our biggest asset is Interstate ninety-five. Our liabilities are water and sewer. They, they know what companies are looking for. Uh, and I think that we should know what our weaknesses are, what our strengths are, because other people interested in this town would, would do that. And plus, I would say that I can, Georgia York strongly was against non-residents to be on the board and she was chairman of the original charter commission in this town. And I'm the only member of this council that was on the, the, the first revision committee of this town. It's, it goes against the spirit of the charter. Certainly, non, uh, business people can certainly uh, view their, uh, where they think we should do to encourage business or any changes in ordinances. But we have to have people have a broad view. The most positive thing, I've lived in this town seventy years, Donna and Gray Lane. That big complex, which I think is our biggest taxpayer. That's what we need in this town. And we need to be able to go out and recruit position, uh, places like that. So. All the, all these people that you've talked to, did you hand them an application and ask them to be on economic development? Did they get a bit, any indication that they know somebody would like to be on E D C? A lot, a lot of these people were from other towns because I wanted to see how other towns handle it. It's very unusual. I'm talking to local people you talked to in the last two weeks. I, I talked to Georgia York and she said, nobody asked her. And. If you talk to her, my, my question is.
She's also lived here for a million years, so I mean.
I, I more or less, I more or less said, you want to be on. So the nine years, nine terms you sat on town council, what has been done with E D C? Yes, this is a pressure. What has been done with E D C? Because what's gonna happen is I'm gonna predict this right now. This goddamn committee is gonna sit, just like it has. You need to move forward. If we gotta move out and get some other people and do something, so be it. Counselor Burns.
My thought is we just have to try. We have to try some. I've been in this town. Probably back in this town for almost twenty years. Um, a- and I've seen nothing move forward in this town. Everything gets started, then everything gets kicked to the side. We have empty buildings that are being torn down because they sit vacant because nothing gets moved forward. So we got our zoning office condemning them. One just went down by the gas station. Because nobody wanted to put forward, to move forward with a coffee shop or anything else or nothing. Everything sits dead in this town. Everybody says, yes, we need business. Well, every time somebody brings up an idea for business, it's swept under the rug. My thought process was, I'm a hundred percent. I, I definitely agree, we need to lower the number. Then we can have three members. At least have a quorum to get started. We have one member who is fortunate to us to come to every council meeting. Mr. Hurst over here says he's reached out to many members in the town. And everybody, remember, I've spoke to, understood my position and the reason why I'm saying business owners that are already paying tax dollars to our town and have something at stake to our town. Mr. Hurst over here says he speaks to many, many members, but many members don't show up in this town. It is left to us to make a decision and move forward.
And I, I suggest we change that number from seven to three and then we can go.
You can go with five, Sharon.
You, you're still gonna have the three.
No, you could.
It, it makes it legal.
No, no, I don't think so. Can you meet if you, if, if you say five and you only have three people come, is that legal?
Yes, we can, we can have a council meeting.
Alright. Alright.
Yeah, it gives you the quorum.
Okay, so.
That's.
So I still say, take, take the non-residents out.
Steve, what was your motion?
Right, so I was gonna make a motion that we, we, we strike or that we amend this um, this ordinance here to take out or not more than two people who have an existing business interest in the town. Strike that from it. And it's to read, A, economic development commission shall consist of five members who are residents of the town. Um, appointments shall be made by the town council for staggered terms of five years with no more than two terms to expire.
I don't know where the, where the five years comes up. I mean, that's just, is that a standard, Marita? Because I think I heard that when I joined zoning.
Yeah, it's in.
Okay.
Your five years.
So I made a motion.
Mr. President, if, this is, this committee is, is created by ordinance by the council. It, it really, there's nothing in the charter that goes to the economic development commission. You could really put anything you wanted into this ordinance.
The, the people that I talked to suggested that the charter says that all boards and commissions, you have to be a resident. Period.
Well, no, I'm, I'm talking about if, if you wanted to change the five-year appointment to something else. We, we discussed the charter at the last meeting. I mean, you, you could interpret the charter to allow you to put non-residents on, I'm, 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 I'm sure that you.
I'd just rather not, okay?
No, I, I understand that and, and I'm not gonna weigh in one way or the other or, or, or get myself in, into the middle of that, but, but as far as if you want to put it from five-year appointment down to, to two or to three, like, you can put anything really into this ordinance because it's, it's created by you. It's not part of the charter.
I would like to see the town move forward. I'm gonna second Steve's motion.
Hold on, I'll say. We're seeing your motion. Steve, can you repeat this? Because we get kind of, I want to make sure it's crystal clear, nice and slow.
I'm making a motion that um, that we amend this pro- proposed ordinance to strike out in subsection A or not more than two people who have an existing business interest in town.
Motion's on the floor. Everybody, is everybody a hundred percent clear on Steve's motion?
Yeah, my motion is just striking out the addition of non-residents to, to be on this board.
But he wants to keep everything else the same.
But I want to keep everything else the same. I'm, I, I'm in agreement with it. So we'll make an emotion to amend, to take this off, and then we can make an emotion to approve this ordinance as amended.
Motion for to have a second?
Second.
Motion for a second, days, all in favor?
First eye. Moffat eye.
Burns' eye.
Your eye. Thank you, Stephen. Alright, move forward.
Now I'll make a motion that we approve this ordinance as it's, um, as it's amended previously.
Second. Motion for a second, all in favor?
First eye.
Burns' eye.
Davis' eye.
Moffat eye.
Your eye. Excellent. Alright, moving forward. Unfinished business number two, discussing considered to vote on a motion to either approve or reject the amendment of code of ordinances, chapter two, administration, chapter two eighty-seven, section two dash thirteen, up, excuse me, thirty-eight D. One thirty-eight D, excuse me, veterans services agent to change residency requirement introduced and sponsored by council. Guys, we put a lot of homework into this. See, uh, Stephen Siple did, uh.
Um, I make a motion that we, that we approve the amendment to the code of ordinances, chapter two, administration, chapter two eighty-seven, section two dash one thirty-eight D, veteran service agents, agents to change the residency requirement.
Second. Motion for a second, days, all in favor?
First eye.
Davis' eye.
Moffat eye.
Excellent, motion passes. Thank you, councils. Public comment? Is anybody online, Liz?
There is no one online.
I know.
Uh, I would like to, before, let's see how it is. I'd like to adjourn in a purse and Dennis Page, he passed away uh, two weeks ago. Dennis, if you didn't know him, he's a really funny guy. He used to drive the red Chevy pickup, said just cherry on it. Very, very active in Hoppington in the, in the early seventies, late seventies, all the way up. Uh, really good guy. Uh, I did attend his wake. Uh, very extremely turn out. I just want to say that you beat me to the punch because I was gonna do, I was gonna do that and uh, I used to see Dennis very regularly and uh, and I missed his wake, but uh, he was a guy committed to this town. He lived in North Stuyen. I didn't grow up in North Stuyen, but uh, uh, if, if you're agreeable, I'd like to make a motion that we, unless you want to do it. I make a motion that the, the town council adjourn in memory of Dennis Page.
I'll second that motion.
Motion for?
On team secondary.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I say, most for.